Let's call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Phoe?
Here.
Mr. Weigum?
Here.
Ms. Selesny? Mr. Rogers? Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Does it sound like we only have three people here?
Mr. Rogers is here. I just unmuted him.
Okay. You hear, Mr. Rogers?
I'm here.
Okay. Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Yes. At this time, the phone number for public comment is 1-415-655-0001, and use access code 1291232466.
Thank you. So we will now move into our public hearings. Just a brief description of how this board conducts business. The city will call each case by the case number, read a short summary of the case. Then we ask each appellant to speak up and introduce themselves, and for the record, state their name and address, please. And then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then we will open it up to, I'm sorry, then the staff will give a recommendation, and then we will open it up to the public. And if there's anybody that wishes to speak on that case, that would be their opportunity to speak. And then we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board to deliberate and make a decision, and then we'll move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2104, the appellant, James E. Anderson Jr., owner, is requesting the following from the board: For a variance to construct two separate attached garages in a new single, with a new single-family dwelling, two are proposed and one is permitted. The property is located on the north side of Farmbrook Road between Telegraph Road and Franklin Road at 24880 Farmbrook Road, Sidwell Parcel 2408 401026, zoned RE Single Family Residential. This appeals to Section 5.62, Paragraph 3, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, are you unmuted? Mr. Anderson, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Do you want my proposed address or my current address?
I think either is fine.
Okay, well, James E. Anderson Jr. proposed build site 24880 Southfield, Michigan. The name is 48076 over there.
Okay, thank you. And would you explain to the board what you're asking for and kind of why?
Well, I'm proposing to build a new construction for myself with just two separate attached garages, one being on one end of the home for easy access to those bedrooms on that side, and the other one is on the other side, like near the master bedroom, for easier access coming out of the master bedroom. It's just a unique idea that I like, and it's for my own personal use. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn it back over to the city for the findings of fact, please. Ed, you're on mute. Nope, you're back on mute.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, sorry. For ZBA case 2104, the appellant, James E. Anderson, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance to construct two separate attached garages on a new single-family, with a new single-family dwelling, one permitted to propose. This appeals to Section 5.62, Paragraph 3, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. Property is located on the north side of Farmbrook Road between Telegraph Road and Franklin Road at 24880 Farmbrook Road, Sidwell Parcel 2408 401026, zoned RE Single Family Residential. The properties to the north are in Franklin, Michigan. South, east, and west are zoned RE Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings in the supervise, in the subdivision Supervisors Plot Number 10, Southfield. Field inspections reveal that surrounding dwelling exteriors are mostly brick with a mixture of various siding materials. Majority of the dwellings in the surrounding area are two-story, with a few one-and-a-half and single-story dwellings mixed in. Some of the dwellings in this area have attached garages. The majority of homes in the surrounding area were built in the 1960s and range from 900 square feet to 3,500 square feet. Along both sides of Farmbrook Road, to the east and west, all the homes have conforming setbacks, but vary greatly. All of the homes in the surrounding area are conforming in setback requirements. The proposed subject home is a one-story, 3,168 square feet in area, constructed with brick and stone exterior. The proposed dwelling includes two separate attached garages. Garage one is located on the west side of the dwelling and is 790 square feet, two-car attached garage. Garage two is located on the east side of the dwelling and is a 325 square feet, one-car attached garage. The site is approximately 1.71 acres in area. The appellant has applied for a permit, TB 210075, to construct a new one-story, single-family dwelling residence, which complies with Article 22, Section 5.193, for setbacks and lot coverage as well as area of the lot.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson, do you agree with those facts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, just one thing that the engineer said that he would either write a letter or saying that it wouldn't be an issue. I don't know if it matters to anyone, but he was just saying he would write something in my favor to say it wouldn't matter because the house would sit back far enough off the street so you wouldn't be able to see it anyway, if anyone was opposed to building anything like that. I was just wondering if he wrote anything or said anything.
I don't have any documentation that there was anything received. Can the city speak to if we have anything? Nope, I don't think we received anything from him.
All right, no worries. I was just wondering.
Okay. So we will ask for the staff recommendation, please.
Yes, staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver to construct one additional attached garage on a new single-family dwelling. One was permitted and two are being recommended with the following conditions: The structure meets all requirements of the building code. The appellant secures all necessary permits required for the proposed construction. And the property is not, I should say, and the garages are not used for any commercial business use or storage. This recommendation is based on the following: The proposed variance would have minimal negative effects to surrounding property. The only, only the single-car garage door would be visible from the street, and the proposed combined square footage of both garages does not exceed the square footage of the principal floor of the dwelling, and the dwelling will be more than 100 feet from the road.
Okay, thank you. So let's open it to public comment. Is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak to this case? Brianna, did we unmute the 5 and 7 to ask if this is the case there's for?
Brianna, is anyone out there? I've lost Brianna now.
Okay, so we'll come back to public comment if we identify there's somebody on the line, but for now, we're going to close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I, I think that the design of the home with the two-car garage facing, not the front, the side, is, is all I really needed to see to like the design, and I'm not overwhelmed by having another small, single-car garage on the other side. I think with the size of the property and the setbacks, I don't think this is an issue at all. In fact, this is a, a nice design.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you.
I don't have any issue with it.
Thank you. Mr. Weigum?
Pardon me, but you're only calling.
Yeah. Ed, or did somebody inspect this property? I assume that, that someone did, but it is to be built on a wetland. I hope you realize that. The reason you can't see to the back of the property is because of the reed grass, which is six or seven feet tall on the side, also known as fragmites. There is standing water about where the, the house is to be built. It is lower there, and I don't know if, if there's a spring in there or what, but in order to construct anything there, they're going to have to do an awful lot of filling. And so I was wondering, did the city actually go back there and look?
I, I would, I will have to double-check with Wayne, who does the reviews on these. However, I'm sure that he viewed the maps for woodlands and wetlands and will before he issues the permit, absolutely. I'll make sure of that. I'm sure he did prior to, prior to this submittal, but I'll double-check with him to make sure that he indeed checked the map for woodlands and wetlands. It won't, it won't come up on your particular Google map unless, or GIS map, unless those layers are put on it. So I'll make sure that he double-checks that before any permit would be issued.
Well, there's cattail back there, too. So there could be a problem. The house to the east is, obviously, I guess they must have put a fill in because it's probably six to seven feet higher than the property that, that it faces. So there may be a drainage problem. I don't know, but certainly the city has to go out and check that out. I don't know what the, I know the DNR has, has problems with filling wetlands. This is less than an acre, so maybe no problem at all, but certainly there's going to be a drainage problem. And they did put, I could see where they did put some, some fill on the side, and then they're going to go back, I guess, and push it in. But anyway, you, you, right now, if you put the house in, there's only one part of the house you could see because the fragmites is six to seven feet tall and obscures the back of the lot. And I'll have to cut that down or whatever they're going to do. One of my questions is, is the garage door that said no one can see that, is that at the side? It's not facing the street? I see Jody is nodding, yes.
Yeah, from the design, that's what it looks like.
Okay. So, so in order to get in there, he has to, he has to make a turn, right? Correct.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I had, I had probably that. Anyway, I guess I have, I, there's an absolute reason why that's the only open spot in that area that hasn't been developed, and it's because of that wetland. And so I would, I am hesitant at this point to say go ahead. I want, I would like the city to go back and look at that and see if there is a problem.
So, okay, I appreciate what you're saying, Wes. I mean, I think that it's outside of our purview, right? Our purview is simply to look at this variance related to the garages, but I mean, certainly that city knows their requirements before they can issue a permit would be to check all environmental requirements.
Excuse me.
What, what's? Yep, I see you, Myra.
Hi, I've been here all along. I heard everything, but I couldn't access my WebEx. I was on the phone. So one, I'd like to sign in, have, know that I'm here.
Thank you.
And I would also like to say, on this case, I heard what everyone said, and I agree, it's a beautiful design, and I hear what Les is saying also. But what we can do is, they can pass it on the contingency that there's no difficulty, or the difficulty with the wetland can be solved. That way, he doesn't have to come back to us, but he won't be able to build unless, unless he can solve the wetlands problem.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city-
...to go ahead and do this design.
Right, the city can't issue a permit until they can clear those environmental concerns.
I, I agree with Myra on putting that condition on there.
If I might, to the chair and to the board as a whole, there are several steps that this builder would have to make, and obviously, one of them would be going through our engineering department to deal with any fill issues or, or height issues or any of that. So until they would get approval from the engineering department, then they'd have to get their building permit from us. There won't be any construction going on out there until those permits are issued. So no matter what is granted here today for the additional garage, if it turns out that the site has significant issues that preclude the home from being built, then what would happen is the waivers would never be enacted for 18 months, and they would become null and void. So the, the issue kind of takes care of itself. If the engineering department, the building department, et cetera, find that whatever submitted will work, then the waivers, waivers are fine. If they end up not being able to get a building permit issued within 18 months, they would have to appear back in front of this board anyways.
And, and nobody, not the city, not any of our members, want this gorgeous house to start sinking, right? So I mean, we'll make sure, you know, the clearance occurs and, and whatever is necessary to, to make sure the house is built stably, right?
Ed, Ed, what we have here in the conditions, and I want you to say that that would, that would, that would hold it, it says on number two that the appellant secures all permits required for proposed construction. You're saying that that, that would take care of it?
Absolutely. Not only that, just the, through the chair to Les, just the, the building code itself would take care of it. You can't construct or alter anything without a permit, so just by that. But the additional condition in the, in the findings would, would be like a double, a double assurance.
Well, I, I'm just slightly concerned because it appears that the city didn't, didn't walk over the lot, and, and I assume that that will be taken care of.
Okay, Ms. Selesny, did you have any other thoughts? And we certainly want to make sure the record reflects your attendance.
No, I have no, if that, if that isn't a problem, I don't have a problem.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Weigum. Ms. Selesny?
You know, I said my, my concern about the property, and I said that I'm here. That's all I have.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, I, I think it's a beautiful design, and I hope that you can get all of the clearances necessary to, to build this property. So let's see. Mr. Weigum, do you want to make a motion on it?
Mr. Phoe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes?
This is Brianna. We do have a call on the line, and I just want to make sure it's now for this case.
Please, thank you.
It's user number six, and it starts with 51781. I'm going to unmute, unmute you.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi. I am, I am here for this one, but I'm, I'm only listening. I don't, I don't have any comments for it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Ed, did you have something else?
No, to the chair, I was just going to remind you that about the public comment portion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Weigum, would you make a motion for us?
Have to unmute here. All right. In, in concern for 2104 case, the appellant, James E. Anderson Jr., requesting the following from the board: A variance to construct two separate attached garages in a new single-family dwelling, one permitted to propose. This appeal is to Section 5.623, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The property is located on the north side of Farmbrook Road between Telegraph Road and Franklin Road at 24880 Farmbrook Road, Sidwell Parcel 24-08-401-026, zoned RE Single Family Residential. I move that we grant this with the following conditions: The structure meets all requirements of the building code, that the appellant secures all permit required for proposed construction, including the wetland aspect, that the property is not used for any commercial business use or storage, and it's based on the following, that the proposed-
Wait, Mr. Weigum, one thing. Ed just made a clarification that it's not the property, but the garage is not used for a commercial business use or storage?
What did I say?
Property is what's written. He just clarified when he read it to garage.
Well, I just, I just read what you guys wrote, okay. That the garage is not used for any commercial business use or storage, and this is based on the following: That the proposed variance would have minimal negative impact in every properties, that only the single-car garage door would be visible from the street, that the proposed combined square footage of both garages does not exceed the square footage of the dwelling, and that the dwelling will be more than 100 feet from the road.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Selesny. Will the city call a roll call, please?
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. So, Mr. Anderson, your variance is approved, and you'll just need to make sure that you work with your builder on the conditions, including the permits and, and such that we discussed.
Okay, no worries. The house already, well, the lot already had a home that was granted a building permit already, so they would just be redoing it because the house is going to sit in the same area. But I appreciate that, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2104.
Somebody's not on mute, Brianna. Can you kind of figure out where that sound's coming from?
I think we're all coming now. Okay, for ZBA case 2103, the appellant, Aver Sign Company, signed contractor representing the owner, Swanson Road Investments, is requesting the following from the board: For a variance to modify the internal lighting of an existing non-conforming ground support sign. The property is located at the northwest corner of Telegraph and Swanson Roads at 26455 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2420201013, Zone B3, General Business. This appeals to Section 8.74, Paragraph 4, Article 3, Chapter 9 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes, I am here, Jennifer Glover.
Hi there. Could you state your address for the record, please?
359 Liverneys Street, Burndale, Michigan, 48220.
Thank you. Could you just explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes, we would like to take this nostalgic Sunoco sign that's been at this location about 40 years, give or take, and clean it up and put in LED backlighting and remove the old fluorescent tube lighting. That's all we want to do to it, is just upgrade that backlighting.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2103, the appellant, Aver Sign Company, signed contractor representing the owner, Swanson Road Investments, is requesting the following from the board: A variance to modify the internal lighting of an existing non-conforming ground support sign. Property is located on the, at the northwest corner of Telegraph and Swanson Roads at 26455 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2420201013, Zone B3, General Business. This appeals to Section 8.47, Paragraph 4, Article 11, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. To the north, the property is Zone B3, General Business, and is occupied by a Best Western Hotel. To the east, across Telegraph Road, the property is Zone B3, General Business, and occupied with a retail mall with Starbucks and a big-boy restaurant. To the south, the property is Zone B3, General Business, and developed with a gas station and 7-Eleven convenience store. To the west, the property is Zone B3, General Business, and developed with a single-story office complex. One of the tenants is Estates Planning Institute. The subject property is Zone B3, General Business, and is currently developed with a 2,537-square-foot Sunoco gas station and convenience store. The site has two entrances and exits along the Telegraph Road frontage and one entrance/exit on the Swanson Road frontage. Survey of signage at the site reveals the following: Two wall signs on the canopy, 30 square feet in area for the Sunoco gas station on the north and south elevations. One legal, non-conforming, double-faced illuminated ground support sign, 100 square feet in area, 40 feet plus in height. This sign is non-conforming due to its height above 15 feet, its area above 50 square feet, and the setback from the property line. Also, two legal, non-conforming, double-faced product price sign, or pricers, near the north and south property lines, 29.5 square, five square feet in area each. The gas station is considered a special use in the zoning district B3, General Business, consisting of a gasoline station, and is allowed one wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage, including signs placed on the canopy, which doesn't exceed two square foot, feet per linear foot of building frontage, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. One ground support or garden ground sign, which shall not exceed 50 square feet in area. One product price sign with a total area of 15 square feet for two products, or 20 square feet for three or more products, and must be attached to either the ground sign or, or garden ground sign or building or canopy fascia.
Okay, thank you. Does the appellant agree with those facts? Or is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
I would like to add that we will be, the next ZBA, because we are going to be removing the illegal price signs that are currently out there, and proposing to put price signs on the canopy. We're just trying to get the site cleaned up and with a better, more refreshed look.
If I might, through the chair, that's really not something that can be discussed tonight as it's a future case and has not been advertised yet. So it is nice to know that there will be an upcoming case, but we should keep our comments to the cases before us tonight.
Okay, so will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes. Staff recommendations is to approve the internal lighting, to approve the change of internal lighting of an existing non-conforming ground support sign with the following conditions: The appellant secures all required permits from the city's Southfield Building Department, which basically will be an electrical permit, that no additional alterations or modifications are made to the existing non-conforming ground sign or any of its components. Obviously, that does not include- or any of its components. Obviously, that does not include cleaning, scraping, repainting of the structure or the box sections of it, or repairing the existing faces within there. It looks like it actually could use a scrape and paint. I'm sure that that is part of their plan. And this recommendation is based on the following: The new internal lighting does not change the sign's structural components or change its appearance. The new internal lighting does not extend the lifespan of the structure of the sign, and the new internal lighting is more energy efficient, and the appellant can perform maintenance on the existing internal lighting system, which is the fluorescent system, without zoning board of appeals approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on the line for public comment on this case?
Hi, Jody. It's Brianna. We have the same gentleman on line six. I just, I'm going to unmute him to see if he has anything to say about this case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're unmuted now. Do you have anything?
No, I was, just listening, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem. We just want to make sure you have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Will you have anything to say about the next case, so I don't have to unmute you again?
No, just, just listening to that one as well. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to turn it over to the board. Ms. Lesney?
I think this is a very reasonable request. Actually, I think it's very responsible of them to, and it's definitely an improvement. I kind of like the old sign, and I'm glad they're going to keep it. It's a property that's been there as long as I've lived nearby, and I'm glad they're improving it, and I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I'm glad they're, I'm glad they're improving the sign, cleaning the site up. I have no issues with any of-
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weigum?
Just one question. On the recommendations number four, it says he can, he can perform maintenance on the existing internal lighting system without zoning board of appeals approval. Does that mean that this case is super flawless? That we don't even need to look at it?
No, if I might, through the chair to Mr. Weigum. The conditions within the extension or continuation of non-conforming sign talks about doing nothing that extends the life of the sign. I just wanted to clarify and have the board understand that what they're doing, while it won't extend the actual life of the frame of the sign, or the faces of the sign, or any of that, will, however, extend the life of the lighting of the sign, and obviously bring it into the, you know, 21st century as far as the type of lighting. So, the lighting will last quite a bit longer than the existing fluorescent sign, lighting would have lasted, so I want to make sure that the board is fine with extending somewhat the lifespan of this sign.
Okay. I, I personally have no problem with it. It is extremely tall, and you can see it from a long distance, but I don't, I don't have a problem.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Signage is, is good.
Okay, is that it? I, I agree, and I think the historic sign is very cool. I'm glad we're keeping it. It is very high, but it's almost like a sign of the times, I feel like, right? So, I think it's very cool, and I appreciate that you are going to put some, some, you know, investment into it. The Ed mentioned, and I think made an assumption, that you're going to clean up the, the poles and, and scrape it down and paint it. I would just like to ask the appellant, is that, in fact, in your, your plan to do so, because clearly it's, it's, you know, exposing some rust and such that it could use that?
That is definitely in our scope of work.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, let's see. Mr. Friedman, would you mind making a motion for us?
Sure. The, the appellant, Aver Sign Company, sign contractor, representing the owner Swanson Road Investment, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A variance to modify the internal lighting of an existing non-conforming ground support sign. The property is located on the northwest corner of Telegraph and Swanson Roads at 26455 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2420201013, Zone B3, General Business. The appellant is looking for a waiver to modify the internal lighting of existing non-conforming ground support sign. I move that we, we grant the waiver with, with the condition that the appellant secure all the required permits from the City of Southfield Building Department, and that no additional alterations or modifications are made to the existing non-conforming sign or any of its components. I make this motion based on the following: That the new internal lighting doesn't change the sign structurally or change its appearance, and the new internal lighting doesn't extend the basic lifespan of the sign, and that the new internal lighting is more energy efficient, and the appellant already can approve, perform maintenance on existing internal lighting systems without ZBA approval.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you very much. Will the city call a roll call, please?
Mr. Fall?
Yes.
Ms. Lesney? Ms. Lesney?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Thank you. Your request is granted. Just again, please work with the city to get the permits that would be required for, I think electrical is what was, was mentioned, so. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, everybody, for your time tonight. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2105, the appellant Terry Carros, representing the owner, Teft Co. NWN Inc., is requesting the following from the board: For a variance of one additional foot of auxiliary sign height menu board height, five feet required, six feet proposed. The proposed property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Swanson Road and Franklin Road at 26245 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2420254007, Zone B3, General Business. This appeals to section 8.60, paragraph 2, subsection D, subsection II, Article 11, Chapter 99 in the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes.
Hi there. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone. This is Terry Carros. I'm one of the owners of Kirby's Coney Island, 21400 Telegraph Road, Southfield, Michigan.
Great, thank you. And could you explain to us what you're asking for tonight and why, please?
Evening, everyone. Thank you for considering my appeal. We have the Kirby's Coney Island, as you're aware of over there. We are, have a drive-through there that we added on recently, which is definitely helping us out during this COVID time, when more people are using drive-throughs and a little bit apprehensive about going inside. We have the drive-view menu board. Would like to have a variance for the one foot in height. It is behind the building. It's not visible from the road, from Telegraph. It's a professional sign. It's a comparable sign to other menu boards we've had in other restaurants. And we would like your consideration for this appeal to let us keep it there where it is now.
Okay, will the city read the findings effect, please?
Yes, for ZBA case 2105, the appellant Terry Carros, representing the owner, Teft Co. NWN Inc., is requesting the following from the board: For a variance of one additional foot in height for an auxiliary menu board sign, five feet is required, six feet is proposed. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Swanson and Franklin Roads at 26245 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2420254007, Zone B3, General Business. This appeal is to section 8.60, paragraph 2, subsection D, subsection II, Article 11, Chapter 99 in the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The property to the north is Zone B3, General Business, with a mobile gas station and 7-Eleven convenience store and OS Office Service with a two-story office building. To the east, across Telegraph Road, the property is Zoned OS Office Service with a one-story office building occupied by Med Share Diagnostics. To the south, the property is Zone B3, General Business, and developed with a multi-story quality inn. To the west, across Franklin Road, the property is Zoned R2 Residential, developed with singles, with single-family dwellings. The subject property is Zone B3, General Business, and developed with a 4,968-square-foot Kirby's Coney Island Restaurant with a drive-up pass-through window. The site has one entrance/exit along the Telegraph Road frontage with grass and minimal landscaping. The drive-up window for Kirby's Coney Island is located on the south elevation. Survey of signage at the site reveals the following signs: One 45-square-foot-in-area wall sign on the west elevation facing Telegraph Road for Kirby's Coney Island. One 32-square-feet-in-area double-faced ground sign that is four feet in height and approximately 18 feet from the west property line near Telegraph Road. And one 34-square-foot-in-area auxiliary menu board sign that is six feet in height at the east elevation behind the building. It's not visible from the street. The restaurant is considered a special use in the zoning District B3, consisting of a drive-through restaurant, and is allowed one wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage with a, with a total area not to exceed one square foot per linear foot of building frontage, or 100 square feet, whichever is less, and one ground support sign, which shall not exceed 50 square feet in the area, or five feet in height. And one auxiliary drive-through sign or menu board sign that shall not exceed five feet in height or an area of 35 square feet. I would also like to point out that these signs were installed without a permit or without necessary approvals. The menu board and the small directional signs. Staff has been working with the appellant, and he's been working diligently with us to get this appeal through and secure the permits and get the necessary inspections, so I do know that he's, he's going to be doing that.
Okay, thank you. Does the appellant agree with these facts, and is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I think, I think that's good.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Is to approve the additional foot in height for an auxiliary menu board sign. Five feet is required, six feet is proposed with the following conditions: That the sign be installed as per the 2015 Michigan Building Code and 2017 National Electric Code, and that the appellant secures all necessary permits and inspections required from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based on the following: The appellant has the option by ordinance to install the auxiliary sign, and the auxiliary sign will not be seen from the street. The auxiliary sign is less than what's permitted at 35 square feet, and the additional foot in height will aid viewing for taller vehicles like vans, trucks, and SUVs.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else on the public comment line, Brianna?
Nope, just our gentleman that's listening in.
Okay, sounds good. So, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any issues with the, with the additional foot, you know, it's facing the, facing the back of the, of the restaurant, and, you know, if we don't have any neighbors here over that wall objecting, I don't have any issues.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with it for the same reason, and if they were putting up signs illegally on the fly for the drive-through, that's probably because of the COVID, so I'm not going to hold that against them as long as they're working on doing it the right way, which they are. Anyway, I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lesney?
I have absolutely no problem with, with approving this case. There have been so many drive-through menu board requests, and almost everyone wants them at six feet because there so many large or taller vehicles out on the market these days.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weigum?
I don't have, I don't have any problem with this. They're using, I went back there, they're using the sign right now, so makes me hungry. But I have no problem.
All right, thank you. I, I agree with kind of everything that my colleagues have said, so I actually have absolutely nothing to, to add. So, I need a motion. Who would like to make a motion for me, or do I have to call in somebody again? Mr. Weigum, you're up.
Oh, okay. For ZBA case 2045, make sure that's right.
2105.
2105. I put my magnifying glass on there. The appellant Terry Carros, representing the owner, Teft Co. NWN Incorporated, requesting the following from the board: A variance for an additional one foot in height for auxiliary sign, a menu board. Five feet required, six foot proposed. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Swanson Road and Franklin Road at 26245 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 24-20-254-007, Zoned B3, General Business. This appeal is to section 8.60, Article 2, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. I move that we approve this petition for an additional one foot in height for auxiliary sign, menu board, five feet required, six proposed, and these conditions: That the sign be installed as per the 2015 Michigan Building Code and the 2017 National Electric Code, that the appellant secures all necessary permits required from the City of Southfield Building Department, and this is based on the following: That the appellant has the option by ordinance to install an auxiliary sign. This auxiliary sign cannot be seen from the street. The auxiliary sign is less than 35 square feet. The additional one foot in height will aid in viewing from taller vehicles, i.e. vans, trucks, and SUVs.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Will the city call a roll call?
Ms. DeFaul?
Yes.
Ms. Celeste?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Your motion, or your request is approved, and please continue to work with the city and the building department to secure the permits that are necessary now that you've cleared the variances here.
Thank you very much. The applications are in, and we'll definitely work with the city to get these resolved and finished. And have a great evening, everybody. Thanks again, and be safe.
Thank you very much. You too.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our public hearing, and we will now, it looks like we have a few set of minutes to review, so let's start with the December 1st minutes. Does anyone have any changes or concerns? That was our nice short meeting with no cases.
I have no problem. I move that we accept these meetings.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Will the city roll call for the December 1st minutes, please?
Mr. Foul?
Yes.
Ms. Lesney?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, the, those minutes are approved. Next up, January 20- Okay, the, those minutes are approved. Next up, January twenty first?
I have one on, uh, page, uh, eighteen, uh, line twenty-three, where I blurred my words apparently. It's in the south and it says in audible, it should be Southburg Association. That's my only comment.
Okay, we can definitely get that changed. Um, anybody else see anything? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, January twenty first with that one change.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, will the city call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Foal?
Yes.
Ms. Celeste?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so the January twenty first minutes are approved. Next up is the February sixteenth minutes.
Um, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Len.
I, I don't understand it. It, it looks like Mr. Weigum isn't there. Um, on line twelve, uh,
Of what page?
She reads Mr. Weigum and then Mr. Rogers. Did we get all three? Yes, yes. Uh, I was at that meeting and I, and I did speak later, so it was just confusing to me.
Hi, I just-
Seeing that there's- I'm sorry.
Can I just say something?
Yep, go ahead, Brianna.
These minutes were done by a new court reporter. And I had requested changes because I actually went through and I listened to our last meeting and I went line by line and, you know, gave her who was speaking. And I actually was not supposed to put these meetings, this, this set of minutes in the pack that I was hoping onto these. So, could we please table these and I'll get you a new set of minutes?
Sure. And does anybody else have anything else they wanna point out? If we're already asking for another?
Sure, sure. My name is spelled F R E E D M A N. And uh, that might have been one of the things that, uh, she already noticed, but, but it's misspelled throughout, even though I wasn't there.
Yeah, uh, and, and on, and on page for me, for, uh, page forty-one, line twenty-three, um, Mr. Weigum certainly didn't say that. This, this would have, this wouldn't have been Ed or somebody.
If I might, through the chair to the board as a whole, we are working through uh, this new, uh, company US Legal Support. We did have a few glitches with, uh, the recording of that meeting too, which didn't help either. Uh, so we'll be, we'll be working through this. This is getting combined with, uh, this company that's being used by other boards and commissions uh, within the city. So they kind of wanted to consolidate everything with one, uh, one reporter so that they had consistency, uh, you know, in, in the, uh, documentation for the different, uh, boards and commissions.
Um, one of the things that she'll have to take a look at is, she's got all the titles of all the people. Uh, city clerk, city attorney, um, all the, all the staff people, basically, it's wrong names and wrong, uh, wrong job throughout this whole thing.
Yes, we will, we will look into all of that, Ms. Celeste. Like I said, it was a little difficult because I don't believe she had the video. She wasn't on the call. It's all new people to her, obviously. So, uh, let's just, uh, give her a chance next couple of meetings to get the, all the bugs worked out.
Okay, I was just pointing it out so that they, she could atta-, uh, pay attention to that as well.
Yeah. Okay. So that's fine. So we'll move past the minutes and to our next meeting on April sixth.
Yes, we have, uh, if I might, through the chair to the board, we have three signed cases for the next meeting on April sixth.
Okay, um, good. Everybody, any other miscellaneous?
Uh, just, uh, from staff, just that, uh, I held out for a long time, but this will be my last meeting, April sixth, twenty twenty-one, as I will be retiring, uh, April sixteenth.
Well, we're very happy for you, Ed, but we are sad for ourselves.
Ed, I think you'll be all right. You always have been.
Ed, you can't retire. I'm sorry.
No, I, I have to. My wife's already retired.
I'm sorry to hear it. I'm sorry to hear that and congratulations, though.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
And I mean, we have also, I think the remote meeting allowance is possibly not getting extended by the state legislature, so.
I believe, if I might, uh, through the chair, I believe that the city has the function to do it themselves. I believe they have to declare a state of emergency first.
Okay.
Seven days, and then the council has to do something too. But I know from an earlier meeting that I was on with one of my boards for the city that they also may be waiting to see what the county does. If the county does something too, but I know that there's, uh, a process for the city to do to extend, to extend that out. And I know that both, uh, Fred Zorn, the mayor and the city council and the city attorney are well aware of it.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll plan to stay in this format for at least a while. Okay, sounds good.
This is Brianna, Jody. I, I would just like to say something.
Yes.
We did have a few, um, board members and one of the city staff that, that were having trouble getting onto WebEx today. So if we do have a meeting on April sixth through WebEx, I just wanna give a little, um, like, tidbit on what may be the problem. I send out multiple WebEx events and it corresponds with when the legal notices have to be advertised. So if you're trying to log in to WebEx using the last invitation received, that would be for the future meeting. So I'm gonna actually share my, something on my screen.
Sure. I did notice that I had the April sixth meeting too. So I was like, that's not the one I want.
I'm glad you noticed. So if you, on the invitation, which it will look like this, it will say date and time. Just make sure it's for the correct one. Because if you're trying the event password or the event number, it won't work. So, just a heads up for everyone in the future.
Thank you. I, I will say, Brianna, it is really helpful if you're able to resend us the invite the day of. Um, today I remembered to search like WebEx to find it. It might get all thousands of emails, but it is extremely helpful if, if you have the time to resend it to us that day, so it's fresh in our inbox.
So I actually, I do that. When I, when I first scheduled the meeting, I set up two reminders. One the day before at four PM and one the day of at six PM. And that, those are automatic emails that would go out. And I'm hearing from different board members that they're not getting these re- automatic reminders.
I've got them on previous meetings, just not today. So maybe they got missed on this meeting. Um, but I have got them on prior meetings.
Okay, I'll look into that. Thanks, Jody.
Yeah, I'm not getting it. But I did use the right, the right date, but I still couldn't get it until you helped me half, partway through the meeting. It just wouldn't go.
I'm so sorry that happened. I, I wish it was just like so easy and didn't have any problems, but I'm juggling different phone calls to try to get you all in here too.
Okay.
We will continue to, uh, do our best to get better.
Yeah.
I, I think we've done a good job over the last year. So I mean, I'm impressed with us that we're, you know, continuing to operate and, and, you know, pass through these functions as, as required. So I think we're doing great. We all, I give ourselves a little bit of a break. All right, so.
I could.
Yeah.
So I, I wanna apologize for not being here on time. I have one of the ones that was struggling trying to get logged into this meeting. Uh, when Ed leaves, I'm going to be taking over his duties. Um, so I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware that, yeah, there is a small learning curve and that, uh, hopefully I'll be able to, uh, get logged in on time and, and be able to perform the duties required. Um, and, uh, you know, so I, I appreciate everybody's patience.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so with that, anybody else have anything else? Otherwise, we can take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Hi.
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 That is also unanimous. All right, good night, everybody.